Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting for Monday, November 3rd to order. If we would have a fire, we're gonna go out this door. If any other disaster, tornado, something, we'll go down to the basement. Roll call of alderperson, Shelley?
Alderperson Whitaker?
Here.
Alderperson Schneider?
Here.
Alderperson Duco?
Here.
Alderperson Darling Urban?
Here.
Alderperson Randall?
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson?
Here.
Alderperson Anthony?
Here.
Alderperson Ovian?
Here.
Alderperson Diddleman?
Here.
Alderperson Kaiser?
Here.
Alderperson Steele?
Here.
Alderperson Waxboiler?
Here.
Alderperson Elmore?
Here.
Alderperson Wigan?
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan?
Here.
Alderperson Astoff?
Here.
Roll call of department heads?
City Treasurer Bierman. City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Matt Icecamp?
Here.
Fire Chief Kurt Lozier?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitreit?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Voice Water Brett Friedman?
Here.
Director of Library Lee Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner?
Here.
City Engineers Scott Sager?
Here.
Director of Health, Housing and Buildings Scott Tyler?
Here.
Director of Grants and Special Projects Eric Schouster?
Here.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clegg?
Present.
Director of Maintenance Mike Shaper?
Here.
Uh, City Treasurer Bierman is excused.
If you'll stand for the pledge.
I am the Speaker of the United States of America and consider the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we do have a public hearing regarding the special service area for the levy of property taxes within the special service area and the issuance of bonds. Eric Schouster and Jamie Maitreit are gonna just speak to it and open it, and then it'll be open to the floor. Come up to the microphone. You have two to three minutes. We just ask that you state your name before you speak.
So pursuant to 35 I S C S 200, Article 27, Special Service Area Tax Law, it allows for the levy or imposition of a property tax or issuance of bonds to be used for improvements within this, uh, special service area. So the special service area is, well, the city does a, in Italian for lack of a better term, uh, it's administered by the Downtown Bellevue Development Corp-, uh, Commission, or DBDC, which consists of nine members. Seven of those members are property owners within that special service area. One alderperson who's, uh, ward, uh, includes that area, and, uh, and the mayor. So those are the nine members, and they're all appointed by the mayor and approved by, by you, City Council. And there are, uh, terms for those members as well, so I know there are some positions coming open. The, uh, DBDC, they're the ones that determine the annual levy, uh, and that's based on post-improvements within that special service area. We had a special service area number three that expired in 2023, with taxes payable in 2024, uh, and that was used primarily to assist with the downtown streetscape improvements and some other improvements within that boundary of SSA number three. The, once that was winding down, the several property owners within that area approached the city by creating a, a, a fourth district. So that one, that's, uh, special service area number three, uh, has expired, no longer exists, and so this is, they, uh, propose a special service area number four. So the statute does not allow for individual property owners to opt out necessarily, but, uh, if a petition objecting to creation of the SSA or, uh, in opposition to levying or imposing a tax or issuance of bonds for the SSA, if it's signed by at least 51% of the registered voters residing within that area and, uh, 51% of the property owners of record within that boundary, has to be filed with the city clerk within 60 days after this hearing. So if that is, is, uh, if that is filed, then this would not look forward. But if no qualifying opposition is filed, then the city can adopt ordinances creating a new special service area no less than 60 days after this hearing. So, um, the anticipated maximum annual levy for the entirety of this proposed district is $150,000 per year. So that is collectively for the entire district, 300-plus properties. Uh, and that's, that was determined by the DBDC board of the commission, uh, and they did that, and they put the goal of keeping essentially, uh, with the same tax level that it was for the previous district. Again, that's 150,000 for the, it's high, collectively for the entire 300-plus properties. It's not per property. There was a rumor floating around, people's taxes were going up $50,000 per property, and that's not the case. The tax rate for 2023 for that special service area was 1.4% of the total tax bill for properties within that district. So, uh, the boundaries that you see, uh, on the map here are essentially the special service area number three boundary with a few additional properties added per request of those property owners.
Well, Eric covered everything pretty well, I think. I do wanna reiterate, while the city does, uh, tax for the DBDC commission on their behalf, and we account for the funds that come in and go out, it is not intermingled with any of the rest of the city funds. That's another misconception. You can't spend it on anything else, um, other than what the DBDC dictates for use in that district, um, improvements to the district. And, you know, we've gotten some questions on how much is this gonna make our tax bill go up? Like Eric talked about, the best thing to do is to look back at your 2023 tax bill that you paid in the summer of 2024, because we're, the limits are pretty much the same, um, unless the county has dramatically changed your E A V, the taxes should stay approximately the same.
So, um, you guys, whoever wants to come up, if you have any say, just come up, please just state your name, and then you have two to three minutes. I'll make your comments. Somebody has to go first?
Hello, everyone. My name's Rachel Speckinger. Um, I recently, this year, purchased the old Club Escapades, um, which is located at the corner of Second and, um, West Main Street. I was just kinda curious about all this, just because I'm new, and, um, I know that all of us on that side are really having a hard time right now trying to bring business over there and trying to grow and build and, you know, just make it work from the day-to-day in that area. So I'm just really concerned about more, paying more taxes out. It's just kinda when you're already, like, barely eking by, um, even if it's not a lot to some people, it's a lot to businesses that are on the borderline of failure anyway, or like never making money. So, um, I just wanted to make sure if this was something that, uh, was gonna be happening, you know, which it sounds like it probably is, then, um, that we have representation, that we're allowed to maybe bring it up to a vote upon all of the, the property owners in the area, and then maybe, um, you know, just kinda see where the money was gonna be going and hear more about it. I know it's in the beginning stages, but since this is something that's been going on for the last, you know, 20 years or whatever, I mean, it's something that's gonna last a long time, and so I plan on being around, you know, and so I'd like to just make sure that we're all have some say in it and to work together, east side and west side, and kinda collectively bring us together to where it's not such a divided problem. If that makes sense.
Okay?
Yes. I don't know if there was anything else that, um, you know, business owners and owners on that side wanted to say, but that was kinda, I think, the gist of it, just making sure that, um, everything was equal and, you know, just kinda be more informed about where the money would be.
Okay? Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Connie Tilly of Van Nuys, Maine. I just wanna say that I've been paying this, uh, special service tax for about 19 years now, and it was used primarily for the streetscape and then several businesses, uh, was helped, uh, with renovations and things that needed in the district. So I think that the actual taxation and special use district is, has been really great for us with the, with all the, the things that we purchased. It's actually been very equal, I think, on the east side and the west side. What I, I do get concerned about is that with the new one is that we would really like to know what the projected projects are gonna be and if they're gonna be beneficial for both sides, since if you look at that map, half of the, uh, the taxation and the taxes are actually being generated by the west side also. So wouldn't it just be doing projects on the east side? We just wanna make sure that it's fair and equitable for all of us and whoever's voting, that we actually get, um, some representation, 'cause I think, I don't know who those nine members are, um, as I wasn't sure if you were keeping the same ones, or since it's not a real district yet, if you have to re- redo that. But if, um, we don't have anyone on the west side, it's, it's a little difficult maybe for us to get money, because I'm not sure what the projects are. So I just wanted to express my concern about that, and, uh, anyway, I hope, I hope we get some help on the west side. Thank you.
Yes? Anybody else? That's it? Okay. The public, for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Herr Sinwaza, and I'm the property addressing. So I would like to firstly make some traction about the numbers. Over there is mentioned that the total cost is 1.5 million. With 9% interest, as far as total cost for this whole project is going to be around a 4.3 million, where interest cost to all taxpayer will be 2.88 million. And if anybody has E A V more than 200,000, you are going to pay 47 to 40,000 in 30 years of time. Your tax increase per year would be around 1,200 to 1,500. And what I understand from this, uh, letter, that majority of this, uh, spending would be on landscaping, lighting improvement, and new parking garage. I mean, I don't really see, and I'm living in Belleville for 20 years, I really don't see that we need new parking garage. So as a, a small business owner, I really think this project is not going to help any, anyone who owns a property. That's all I want to say.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Is this a time for questions about, about the...
This is strictly a time for you to speak, um, for any comments. It's not a question and answer.
Just for the public hearing, right?
Yes, this is just for the public hearing on the SSA, Special Service Area.
Rick Brown, Bellevue. Uh, I think we pay enough taxes here. I know on the house that I built in this town, uh, it could tax it over 10% of the 1/3. I could move that house to Shidaw on a lot that I sold to my daughter, and the taxes would go from 8,600 down to about 4,600. Same house, except the street's not gravel. It's got concrete street, it's got concrete curb and color, and they're wide enough so the two cars can go down and people park. We have enough taxes. Any taxes? This is ridiculous. You guys spend, spend this into the ground all the time, and it keep going up all the time. You come up with some other way of coming up with another tax, or another fee, or, or just some. It just runs people out of town. Less people, that means the taxes have to go up for the people that are left. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's, uh, Benny Parr. I own Benny's Pizza Park, downtown Bellevue. I'm actually for this, um, for this, it does help our downtown. As a business owner, um, we wouldn't have the downtown that we have now if, if this, um, tax wasn't happening. We wouldn't have the outside dining, we wouldn't have all the businesses that we have. And we pay a lot of taxes, agreed, but the taxes that the building owners and business owners are paying now here, and that when it goes to this, it's actually going directly to our district that's helping. We have an incredible downtown, and we've already been paying these same taxes for 25, 30 years. I would pay double to keep it, it, what it, what it is. When that, uh, when, um, that taxing body was kind of eliminated with the past administration, I was, I was really upset, 'cause I'm like, what does that mean for our downtown? We see other parts of the town that the city is fighting to, um, improve. We have the means to do it with these, um, with the money that's generated from this. I mean, it's not a lot of money, $150,000 a year, to say that, that we are gonna get the improvements we need and the, um, I've, I've seen the list of some of the things that it's, it's, uh, going for, you know? We all complain about parking lots, we need better parking lots, we need this, we need that. This money will help that. That, I know we're all taxed out, you know, through the state and different things like that. We're beat up by taxes, but if you own a building, I own two buildings downtown, so I'm paying, paying that, that twice. So, um, I would pay double to, to keep it in check, because I've seen, I've been, um, I've lived here all my life, I've been in business for eight years, we've expanded, and, um, this, um, this, this task is a great thing, and I think you have to try to look at it from both sides. It's just my point, uh, or my, uh, perspective, but, um, I've seen what it, what it does. I regularly go to the meetings, or, or when, when it was in the past, I would go to the meetings, and, and they're an open book. They'll, they'll let you know what, what's happening, you have questions, suggestions, um, they're all for that. You just have to be involved. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody else?
Jennifer Brown. I'm Jennifer Brown, I own, I am designed in Bellevue, and I opened the store 20 years ago, and I too was a struggling business owner, and the tax hit so that we could get the streetscape, and I couldn't push her because I couldn't get access to my building, because of all the beautiful things I did downtown, uh, but being one of the few businesses that were actually down there back in 2005, the benefits of the streetscape were immeasurable. And I don't think I would be here today, 20 years later, with the success of the business if it had not been for the investment that we all made. And I understand the frustrations, um, some points of view with the parking garage, because it seems very ambiguous, and might affect certain people, or hurt certain people. I've been very blessed to be a part of a lot of different committees over 20 years. I too have been pretty active, and I cannot tell you how many times we had a really great anchor store that was gonna come down here and is looking at property, but they didn't feel like the parking was sufficient to be able to support their needs. And this happened over and over again. And I truly believe, even personally, my business won't really benefit from the parking garage just because of its location and what it's designed to do, but I think that the downtown area will completely benefit just from the conversations I've been part of over the years. And as such, I too would gum down if I needed to, because I know that the investment has bit, and we've seen it happen. So I just wanted to share another viewpoint, and I'm not really, and I, but I, I think that I would vote for this again to have a good investment. So, thank you.
Hi, Dave Shane Warren, Lincoln Theater. But yes, the streetscape was good, and we continually need improvements. So it's a good thing, um, you know, parking garage is an option. I know part of that committee, I know everyone's not on that committee, but the good thing is expanding that streetscape, making it beyond, bringing it into parking areas, bringing it in, so those side street buildings can be filled with very viable, more restaurants, more retail, et cetera. Lots of good ideas I've heard come out of this committee, and I think at 150,000 a year divided by 300 and some property owners, that's about $450 on your tax bill. So just the, the simple math there because of those limits, so yeah. But anyway, thank you.
James Galt Pepper, Bellevue. So I think what I would say is, he might be here, he says, oh, he would like to double it, right? That's fine. That says he's on the east side. We're supposed to be going by the west side, okay? All this money going for a parking garage over there? We get, we get, parking sucks. Understood. Well, how does that benefit us? And we're well-furmed with half of that, half of that. How's that help us on the west side? That's what my true question is.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's William Enyers. Uh, I own an office building at 12 South Second Street, which is right off West Main. So the parking garage's not gonna directly impact me, but I've seen the results of what this taxing district has done over the last 20 years. I formerly owned the building also at 132 West Main, right across from Connie Tilly, and, uh, there have been numerous, numerous improvements made as a result of the work of, of that committee, and, uh, I think that in order to protect my property values and increase my property values, what helps downtown helps my office building, although it's not a retail business. So I appreciate it, yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, my name's Alex Karowski. I have a small lot downtown and I'm a Bellevue resident. I just wanna, my reaction to just some of the things I've heard here, um, generally, I think the, uh, idea of, uh, you know, another tax, uh, you know, service area, uh, I think it's a good idea, I think, uh, it can be done well, but some of the specific things I've heard is, uh, I think there's a lot of truth to the making sure that the east and the west side get equal benefit for, you know, equal contribution, uh, and I say that this one has a lot on the east side. Um, the other thing is the parking garage. I don't get the impression that that's what downtown really needs. It's, you know, it's something that, especially in a town that's low density as Bellevue, you know, comparable to something like St. Louis, it's, uh, that's gonna sit empty, you know, nine days out of 10, and I just don't see how that's going to create a return on investment, you know, just because it serves as an occasional festival or, uh, other event like that.
Thanks, Alex. Anybody else? Okay. Public hearing is officially closed. So we're gonna move on to public participation, and come up and speak about something that's on the agenda, two to three minutes, just please state your name.
Michael Hacker. Here to talk about, uh, 11D3, Retaining Wall at 221 Columbus Drive. It specifies that this is to be funded with TIF III funds. Might come as a surprise if that property is not, never has been, part of TIF III. They'll agree that it's near TIF III, but it is not within TIF III, thereby making TIF III funding ineligible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dave Shane Warren again in Lincoln Theater. I just like, like coming before council every now and then and thanking everybody. I don't think I've been in front of this group before since you all have been elected, but I'd like to thank you for your continued support of Lincoln Theater. I know one of the little things you do is help with parking, but that really makes our guests from out of town, our performers from out of town, I mean, you know, feel safe and welcome. And also, I don't know if I've ever told you, uh, that the vital role, I think, we play in the economy, not only downtown, but the whole Bellevue area. According to the studies and statistics from the Illinois Tourism Bureau, as well as the national owners of theaters in America, the economic impact of a theater, adding all that up, our 2024 impact to the Bellevue area, other businesses, not us at all, other businesses' impact was close to $2 million, bringing in people in this area. A good example, on Thursday, we had over 200 people at our Ozzy Osbourne Con- funeral tribute concert. I met a couple there who drove five and a half hours to come to Bellevue. After the show, they were like, we love the venue, but we love this town too. We are coming back. They drove all the way from Wisconsin, and they were like, we'll be back for events, you know? On Saturday, we had almost a completely sold-out theater, and, uh, I bet you couldn't find parking downtown. You couldn't, I heard lots of comments, they couldn't find dinner downtown. Everywhere was just packed, uh, before the show on Saturday. So again, you know, the, things like that help continue not only downtown, hotels, everything, Airbnbs in the city are all business, uh, are all infected, uh, affected. But my second point here is, I, if you don't know, the St. Louis International Film Festival, presented by Cinemas St. Louis, has chosen the historic Lincoln Theater as a location to film certain films this year. We have six different films we would be screening on Sunday, November 9th and November 16th. So I encourage you to continue, you know, to support that, that gets them back every year. I've talked to the committee, the committee leadership, the membership are excited to have it at the historic Lincoln in Bellevue. Uh, I'm pretty sure we're the only location in the Midwest, and we're one of their bigger locations. So they've given us some great films to try, but we need to make sure we can show them as a city and as a whole area that people will come to this. These are films, international documentaries, American-made movies that probably would never be shown in St. Louis, and think of all the other film festivals you hear that talk about, Toronto Con, movies are shown there, shown here at this film festival. So excited to have that, glad to be a part of it. I hope you tell everyone you know, come on out. Uh, there will be tickets at the door individual, but this, the Cinema St. Louis sells packs, so you could come see all six movies or three, and you can come to a variety of their locations. So it's a pretty cool thing to have that right here in Bellevue.
Thanks.
The 9th and the 16th.
Hello, Joyce Driver, Ward 5, Bellevue, and I'm also here to speak about the retaining wall on the private property at 2021, 221, I'm sorry, Columbus Drive, Bellevue. As Michael already pointed out, it's not in TIF III. I've got a, a copy of the property tax record that I could give to Mr. Randall if you'd like to have it. That makes it ineligible to be funded by TIF III, but funding a retaining wall on private property sets a dangerous precedent. If the whole reason for the need for a retaining wall is because they fear of cars that need their house, it would be a lot less expensive to put a third stop sign at that intersection. That intersection has three different directions of travel, two have stop signs, one does not. It'd be a lot cheaper to put on a stop sign than to put a retaining wall on somebody's private property. It's almost $20,000 for that retaining wall, and it's smaller than the wall my daughter just had put in at her house for $9,000. It's twice the price tag. I don't think that taxpayer money should be spent on beautifying private property. If they're afraid of cars hitting their house, they could look at doing, uh, big boulders, bordering the yard. If they want the city to pay for something, the city can put in a stop sign. Ballards, were ballards even discussed or priced out? I seriously doubt it. So I strongly oppose, and think that in fact alone, that TIF III, that that property's not in TIF III, should cause us to go back to committee and not be voted on tonight. I think that any responsible alderperson, council member, would at the very least post a vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, or council members, Bell Enyers here again. I'd like to speak, uh, regarding the zoning issue at 224 South Charles Street, and I would respectfully ask the council to affirm the zoning board's denial of a request to resi- And I respectfully ask the council to affirm the zoning board's denial of a request to rezone that property to multifamily. The zoning board had a forty-one vote in denying the request. All of the neighbors who appeared testified against the rezoning, and both aldermen opposed that rezoning. And the reason for that is that the infrastructure in that neighborhood simply does not support a five-unit apartment building in what is now a single-family residence. The, there is not nearly enough parking there. There's a fire hydrant in front of the house. So there's only one parking space in front of the house on Charles. And the, excuse me, in the rear, you could at most put two or three cars. Every house on the block, whether on Coffin Street or on Charles Street, every single house along that alleyway only can access their garages through the alley. So every house must use that alley. Additionally, Steve Katz's law office is, his parking lot is located off that alley. So we get all of that traffic through a single-lane alley. There's only about a foot on either side of my car when I come down that alley. So there's not room for two lanes there. Additionally, we do get some traffic in the mornings and the afternoons from Washington School, from parents dropping off and picking up their children. So the amount of traffic on that alley already is unsustainable. If you were to add five apartments with an average of two cars per apartment, that's going to put far more traffic than the infrastructure that alleyway can handle. Additionally, when the real estate agent who listed that property posted it, she had it posted as multifamily. I called that real estate agent and I explained to her that it was no longer multifamily. So the purchase of the property either knew or should have known that that is not a multifamily residence, and therefore the burden would be on him to prove that it should be changed, and he failed to read that burden of determination. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
My name is Ryan Rothweiler. I am one of the co-founders for the Freedom Fest that is on the board report tonight. What we're trying to do is actually bring more awareness for veterans. Myself and the other co-founder sat down in twenty minutes and laid out everything that you guys will hear about tonight. I think we see, you know, songs for soldiers being pretty big and donating back to veterans like myself. And my board members from, I'm a Shriners Legion of Honor, you know, I'm active with them, I'm actually in the board. You know, it takes a lot for a city to put something new on, I understand that. But at the same point in time, it's also time to start giving back and bringing something new. We plan to do that and give back. Our first year, we're going to do something, you know, we're trying to go as big as we can. So I think putting veterans at the forefront for this is an amazing opportunity for Belleville for growth and continue to move forward to be able to support other people like me that have served during many years. I mean, we're celebrating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary this next year. We're going to kick it off right before it happens. So I just think this is an amazing opportunity for Belleville, and thanks for the opportunity.
My name's Barry Gregory. I think I know most all of you, at least ninety-five percent of you. I was a business owner here in town for twenty-six years. I started working in Belleville in September of eighty-five. Fortunately, for the last two years now, I've been retired, semi-retired, I guess. But I'm the other co-founder with Ryan of Freedom Fest. We met and within twenty minutes of meeting, just, it would be two months ago yesterday, we came up with a plan and some insight into creating a fundraiser to help veterans here. We saw what was happening in Columbia, and we knew that Belleville, both of us having pride in our city, wanted to bring something here locally. We think we can benefit, and our charity that we've put together is going to be to honor veterans and our first responders. Our first year, we intend to donate Honor Flight. It will be a music fest. So we started talking about locations to have it. We knocked around local businesses, parks, and different locations, both inside and outside the city. But the following day, on Monday, I contacted Ryan and I said, I think I have the perfect location. Prior to serving here in Belleville with my business, I was in law enforcement, so safety was a huge factor. We decided to talk to the city about the use of the Lindenwood Campus, the Southern Illinois Justice Center. It's a secure facility, twice fenced, so what could be better for us to work with? Halloween evening, I talked to the Sheriff's Department detectives. They're willing to donate their time because there are several veterans in that unit who will donate their time and services to the fund. We just spoke with the Illinois Licensed Beverage Association. They're willing to help host and support the unit, which is the professional organization which most of these restaurant owners belong to. We, the I-Night Shrine has stepped up. Ryan's part of the Legion of Honor. We hope to get the Provost Marshal Unit invited. I talked also to the I-Night, the World Championship I-Night Drumming musical corps, who are talking about participating. So if there's any questions, would be happy to answer them later on or at any point. But we think it's a viable plan, and what better to support than our veterans and first responders? Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
Good evening. Adrian Roper, I'm a fellow neighbor of Mr. Ennier on the oven. I just wanted to re-circle back on the two twenty-four South Charles rezoning proposal, and I want to share that I do support. Mr. Ennier's comprehensive opine and request for affirmation of that denial of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Mr. Brown?
Rick Brown, Belleville. I'm here on the two twenty-four case also. Now, you guys, most of you people haven't been here long enough to know what went on in that neighborhood. But we used to have a mayor here that, his name, he's our county board chairman now, Mark Kern. And he started, him and his lawyer buddies started getting together a group so that they could reduce the amount of two-family and four-family and eight-family, multi-family dwelling, rental property in Belleville. They want to get rid of it. Because some of the aldermen thought that to get rid of where the cockroaches live, to get rid of the cockroaches. That's what was told to me. Now, there was a committee that was formed. It was called the Single Family Land Use Committee. And in fact, Mr. Ennier was on that committee. And it was his job to go around Belleville with the other, there were some lawyers on there too. And these, all these lawyers that knew better, went into these neighborhoods and rezoned areas. That house at two twenty-four, it was zoned multifamily forty years. And then the city changed it retroactively. You stole the property rights from the people, like the thousands of other peoples in Belleville, that you stole the property rights from. This is racism on a massive scale. You guys are going to find out real shortly just how big a racism it is. This was horrible. I didn't think the army allowed racism there. You know? My father was in the air force. He was a lieutenant. There was none of that under him.
Mr. Brown, address us, please.
Excuse me. But these lawyers, Bob Spray, Tom Peters, he was on the committee. Lawyers know better than to do, you can't steal people's property like this. If you want property that someone owns to put a road through, you've got to use quick take. And you've got to go to court, and they set the price to pay the people for the property. You stole these thousands of pieces of property without paying a nickel for them. And all these empty lots around town that nobody is ever going to build on again, that's what we've done. And it was all done by Mark Kern and the Single Family Land Use Committee. This is ridiculous. You guys are, this city is a bunch of thieves. You really are. You stole property. And there's no damn thing you can do about me saying this either, because it's the truth, and the truth is the perfect defense.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are you standing up to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm getting sick and tired of this woman that's coming up here and talking.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Roberts, and I'm a representative for High House Solution. We are a small business here in the metro east. We have properties in Belleville, Coffinsville, and one of the properties I'm here to speak about tonight is the two twenty-four South Charles. So we are actually asking that you all will reconsider our request to have it rezoned, which provides units for the following reasons. And pertaining to the parking situation, there's more than adequate parking there. We've actually had researchers and land surveyors come out to tell us there's more than enough adequate parking. There are three, one studio bedroom, studio apartment, and then there are two other one bedrooms, which would not likely have more than two cars for that area. And the studio would very likely just have one car. Additionally, there is off-street parking. We had a mini-traffic study conducted, and the resulting at these traffic studies suggested that there would be more than enough space for the cars that we would have there and for the light traffic that would be coming through that area. But most importantly, outside of that, is that this is a blighted property that has been sitting there for the past five plus years. And the neighbors of that area know exactly how long it's been there. And as you all know, in any area where there are blighted properties, what comes with that? There comes crime, there comes a reduction of property values. One of our neighbors so eloquently stood up here and said that they were in favor of the SSA or the Special Use that is really just right next door to our property. The revitalization of downtown would increase their own property values for the office space that they own in that area. Being merely blocks away from downtown and having a blighted property there is going to reduce those property values that we are literally investing in. On top of that, what we've shown in the research that we've done with the Horton School of Business and some of our associates who have helped us to put this project together, that by having this property renovated into a five-unit, or we would be willing to condense that density down some, that it's actually going to increase the property values of the neighbors, especially our neighbors in Hoven, three to twelve percent. By having it as a blighted property, it actually reduces those properties by one to two percent. So it's going to make the property values go lower than they could possibly go higher. In addition to that, as our other neighbors that talked about, that it's important to have this city and the neighbors reflect the vitality of Belleville. And the fact that we put so much in investing into our arts community, we put so much investing into our vibrant downtown, we put so much investing into our children, we want to make sure that we have properties that are reflective of that. So having a five-unit property is not going to be an additional strain on the city's resources or its infrastructure. It's actually adding to the vibrancy of the area. The people that we're looking to target to rent these units would be working professionals. Many of them might be your coworkers, they'd be your neighbors. Some of them, if you're old enough, might actually be your children. They're getting their very first apartment and their chance to have some freedom on their own. So with that, I'd like to thank you and ask you to reconsider our zoning request. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Let me tell you what, some of those people, some of those people.
Hi, Victoria Martin. I'm not speaking on mine, though. Oh, you can't tell. Good voice. I know the microphone is a little quiet.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say your name was?
Victoria Martin. I'm not speaking on mine. You know, I'm two twenty-four, like many others have. I was kind of shocked when I was in the zoning commission to see that it was not approved. I moved to Belleville. I will promote. And I fell in love with downtown. I'm a young, single professional. And it's just like a hallmark of me downtown. And it was so disheartening to hear that we have a wonderful group of investors who wants to revitalize downtown, and they're not being permitted to do that. So people like me can't move to Belleville if they're not permitted to do that. And I had a friend come for my birthday recently, and she got to town before I did. And she's walking around Belleville. She's from Chicago. And she said, you know, I turned around a few streets and I was like, oh, this is a little scary. I'm going to move back. You know, I'm going to come back to downtown. Being able to revitalize these blighted homes, like we've mentioned, would make people so excited to be downtown. I'm just, I'm shocked that we're preventing folks from taking a house that clearly has five utility meters in the Zillow listing and renovating it as the five-unit building that it is. I'm shocked. I'm a little frustrated. And it makes me think about my future in this town. So it's, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So moving on from public participation, the character word of the month is peace, working and living in harmony with each other. First motion of the night, I need a motion to approve the changes to the traffic and parking committee appointments of the council committee appointed by the mayor for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Motion and second. Any discussion? I'm hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of October twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Schneider.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I need a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of two million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents, and payroll in the amount of one million, thirteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call? Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dalling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Kaiser.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostel.
Aye.
For reports, can I read them both together?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve the city attorney report dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and a motion to approve the treasurer's report September twenty twenty-five, and statement of cash and investments report September twenty twenty-five.
Ferguson.
Sullivan.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Standing committee reports. Alderperson Elmore, motions from Traffic and Parking Committee?
Yes, we have two motions. I'd like to raise a group. I'll certainly objection. I'm going to make a motion that we change the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles per hour from two thousand South Eleventh Street to twenty-five eighty South Eleventh Street. And then a motion to approve a school zone at twenty-five sixty-five Amen Drive from Premier Drive to South Greenmount Road, Belleville School District. Those are my motions.
Ferguson.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Motion from Ordinance and Legal Review Committee. Alderperson Steele?
Thank you, Mayor. Eleven B, motion from ordinance and legal. Motion to amend Title VII, Traffic Code Chapter Seventy, General Provision Section Seventy point zero seven five and seventy point zero seven six, towing and impounding vehicles involved in a crime.
Side it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What does that exact mean? I mean, what are they changing to?
So we changed the entire ordinance. There was, the current tow ordinance is being removed, and a new one is being brought in. And we mimicked, was it carbon ban?
Yes. It mimics the City of Carbon Nails ordinance, which was recently found to be constitutional and acceptable by the Illinois appellate court.
Any other discussion? I'm hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. A motion from the Board of Fire and Police Commission. I need a motion to approve the hiring of Maichi Slav Kaspachik and Connor Shock as probationary firefighters effective Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, twelve oh one a.m.
Anthony, motion.
Aye.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dalling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker? Motion carries. Are they here tonight or do they all stand? Welcome, guys. Alderperson Randall, motions from Streets and Grade?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks, can I read these together?
Yes.
What would you like polled? 11D1 and 11D3. Is that all? Yes. Okay. I'm gonna start with 11D2, 11D4, 11D5. 11D2 is motion to approve an agreement with Oates Associates for preparation of 2026 Build Grant application for West Belleville improvement not to exceed the amount of $30,000, TIP 3. 11D4 is motion to approve an agreement with TWM for an on-demand engineering and surveying services not to exceed the amount of $9,500, motor fuel tax and TIP. And 11D5 is a motion to approve ownership and payment responsibility from St. Clair County to Belleville for eighteen streetlights along Old Collinsville Road from West Boulevard to Lebanon Avenue, motor fuel tax and TIP. So moved.
Ferguson.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call? Duco?
Aye.
Dalling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, I'll take 11D1. Motion to approve an agreement with Lockmueller Group in the amount of $90,681 for design engineering supplement for downtown resurfacing project, ARPA, and TIP 3. So moved.
Ferguson.
Okay, motion and a second, discussion?
Okay, my question is, was Lockmueller the cheapest bid that came in on this? I just have a little uneasy about approving this with the oil and chip programs that they were involved in, so I have to say no.
So it's an engineering customer, so we didn't go out, we don't go out for bid for the engineering services? They're one of our on-demand, or I don't know if that on-demand is the right word, but on-call engineering services?
I just feel them as being approved when they just made mistakes with the oil and chip program.
Okay, any other discussion? Did you want to discuss? No. Okay, roll call? Dalling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, 11D3 is a motion to approve an estimate from Hank's Escavating and Landscaping Inc. in the amount of $18,500 to construct a modular block retaining wall at 221 Columbus Drive to prevent vehicles from damaging the home at the intersection of North 37th and Columbus Drive utilizing TIP 3. So moved.
Ferguson.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I am on Streets and Grades and I voted for it up there. I did not know that it was not in TIP 3. So I feel like we were not led to this right amount. I was going to suggest ballards, but after seeing how they said it would be so nice to do the block retaining wall that they were going to do, I voted yes. I just think now after I find out it's not even in TIP 3, how we can do that, is that legal? I mean, I don't know. I mean, that we're, that the property isn't in, and maybe since it isn't in TIP 3, maybe we go a cheaper way of doing it. But I just feel that that's not right if it's not in TIP 3.
Alderperson Randall?
Yeah, I would like the City Engineer Scott Sager to speak to this.
So Columbus Drive, that, the front yard of that residence is in TIP 3 and the retaining wall is proposed to be in the right of way, so not on private property, so it would be in the TIP 3 district.
Okay, that's why we weren't told that in the meeting.
Yeah. Person Kaiser?
Have we set a precedent before? Have we done so at any other location throughout the city? With a retaining wall?
I know there's been retaining walls built as part of projects just to help with the grading, make it stable. I don't know if there's ever been a retaining wall proposed to help to prevent vehicles from leaving their roadway. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know that.
This scenario reminds me of a frequent accident site that existed at East Main and Douglas. And I know there's ballards there now to protect that building. Do we know if those ballards were put in at the Austin City or?
Well, I think I can answer that a little bit. It's in our ward. The first ballards that were put in were not actually put in deep enough. So when the car did hit them and got through them and then hit the building, the ballards were reinstalled deeper. And who paid for those, do you remember? Who paid for the installation of the ballards fighting now, so I can remember? That's why you're questioning, right?
Yeah.
Who's paying for it?
It kinda goes along with the precedence question.
That was prior to me being in the departments that I'm in right now. I cannot comment on those. I can comment on Belleville crossing.
You've gone on what?
On Belleville crossing. Those ballards were installed at Austin City. Broke my streets and grades in this council or previous council.
Okay.
The one at the turn?
Or Belleville crossing and Seventeenth Street intersection. Changed from South Seventeenth to Belleville crossing.
I just think we have a responsibility to provide this. This is a known accident site. We talked about a variety of lesser expensive and less intrusive kinds of things and it was a general agreement that the retaining wall would be the most effective and protect any of those property owners, slowing down that traffic, you know, kind of decreasing the possibility of continued accidents. And so I continue to support this.
Person Wygant?
I believe that the city paid for those about eleven years ago, twelve years ago, on East Main Street.
Okay.
Can I, I don't know if this is the way you can do it or not, but can I make a suggestion that it goes back to Streets and Grades and see if we can find something a little cheaper? Maybe use the ballards instead of the decorative landscaping blocks and all that? Because, you know, we're gonna set a precedent. Somebody else has a lot of accidents at their site or their home or something. They're gonna want retaining walls like that. Maybe send it back to Streets and Grades and get more estimates of what the ballards would cost in that versus our, as it was said, boulders, big rocks. It's just a suggestion I have. I'd like, can I say to make a motion to send it back to Streets and Grades on this one?
You can make a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table it, to send it back to Streets and Grades and see if we can come up with a nice thing, but not body-looking, but something a little cheaper since it's the taxpayers paying for this.
One second.
Motion and a second to table, discussion? Alderperson Steele, you have your hand up.
Well, I, I was going to say I'm in favor of it. I'm on Streets and Grades and we spoke about it for a lot, around forty-five minutes at that meeting. And if you've been down that street, that people do barrel through because it goes to northwest there at McCollum's. And I think as you go down Thirty-seventh, it curves just like that and that house is right there. So if you've taken that way and seen that house, you would want them to have a protective wall.
I'd almost like to mention that this was not a, kind of a really impromptu kind of thing. This has been studied for months. And there is a variety of options considered. And I just really believe that the city has some responsibility to take an action to prevent the possibility of injury to those people, both to the drivers as well as to the people in that home. And we've been studying it for months, so I'm not in favor of table.
As the alderman who brought this in front of the Traffic Committee where it originated, having spoken to residents at the, within the neighborhood there, this home's been hit three times. Both sides of the garage and then further up the hill towards Columbus Drive. Further up Columbus Drive. We talked about various solutions that might take place. It was moved on to the Streets and Grades Committee. I would ask the City Engineer, what are the costs of ballards?
I think the average price has been about $1,200 apiece total with past projects.
I think we have a motion on the floor to table. I'll call for the vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to refer this back to committee, so we need a roll call vote.
Could you, and a yes vote would be?
A yes vote would be to table it and take it back to committee. And no vote would not do that. Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
No.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
No.
Kaiser?
No.
Steele?
No.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wygant?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Astoff?
No.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
No.
Dalling Urban?
No.
Okay. Motion does not carry, so we have another motion and a second on the floor to approve this. Roll call. Okay, here we go. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Dalling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now let's move on to the motions from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Read them together or are we picking some out?
I'm gonna separate 11E2.
E2? E2 and E9?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I got it, okay. 11E1, 29 October 25. Zayed Mohammed Ali requests for area bulk variance for relief from the required twenty-five-foot feet setback at 2,005, South Belt West, zero eight dash zero two zero zero four zero zero two zero two zero, located in a D1 light industry district, applicable sections of the city code 162.306, 162.570. Ward 2, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E3, 32 October 25. Ronan Depp Green requests for a special use permit for a Class B liquor license at 4320 West Main Street. Parcel number zero eight, one eight point zero two one five zero two seven, located in a C2 heavy district, heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. In the name of applicant only, Ward 8, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E4, 33 October 25. James and Julie Canning requests for a use variance for a commercial office use at 4204 Frank Scott Parkway West. Parcel number zero eight, one nine point zero three zero 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 one two, located in an A1 single-family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.093, 162.570. Ward 8, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E5, 34 October 25. Gateway Storage requests for a special use permit to operate an indoor self-storage facility at 1148 Rural Heights Road. Parcel numbers zero eight, zero eight point zero two zero one zero zero one and zero eight, zero eight point zero two zero one zero zero two, located in the C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 3, Zoning Board of Appeal, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E6, 35 October 25. United Inc. requests for sign installation permit in the area of Special Control at 227 East Main Street. Parcel number zero eight, two two point zero three three four zero three seven, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 155.052, 155.053, 155.090, with the additions made on the new drawings presented to the board of Ward 2. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E7, 36 October 25. Beehive Market requests for a special use permit to operate a convenience store at 6,500 West Main Street, Suites 216. Parcel number zero seven, one two point zero two one zero zero two five, located in the C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 8, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. 11E8, 37 October 25. Tanya Clark requests for special use permit for an event center and Class F liquor license at 29 North 64th Street. Parcel number zero seven, one two point zero two one three zero two three, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 4, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. Randall, so moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I didn't get a chance to go ahead and say I wanted you to break out 11E8. I'm very familiar with this property. It's the old gymnasium there for Notre Dame. The property has been vandalized. The major thing you're going to run into with this property is you're going to have to have new water lines brought in from the, from Main Street in order to increase water pressure because you've got forty-two thousand square feet. There's three floors, fourteen thousand square feet on each floor. They're going to have to have extra pressure brought in. And they can't do it with the pressure going in the, into the building at the present time. You need a new roof. You need new HVAC. You need new plumbing. You need new electric. The property is basically gone. I want to help save this lady. Even if she had the money, she'd be throwing good money after bad. And we don't need to go ahead and fight amongst ourselves down the road when the firemen go out and do the inspection, say, we can't pass it. This is, this is a very vulnerable project that can't get off ground floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't have a choice.
All right. Eleven E two. Shelley?
Okay. Eleven E two, thirty, October twenty-five, Elijah and Kelly Roberts request for a use variance for a multifamily dwelling at twenty-two, two twenty-four, South Charles Street, parcel number zero eight, two seven point zero one two six zero four five, located in an A one single family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point zero nine three, one six two point five seven zero. Ward six zoning board of appeal recommended denial with a vote of four to one.
Mayor, I move to deny the request.
Okay. Have a motion?
Not second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just have a quick question. It sounded like our vote suspension, the speaker, Kelly Roberts, mentioned that there was a traffic study done. Would you mind asking, Mayor, what, who was, who was engineering for this traffic study? And has anybody seen it? Was it submitted to you or?
Dusty or Eric, do you guys know at zoning, was that submitted, a traffic study or anything? Person Rothweiler?
Mayor and council members, the reason that, there are a couple reasons why I recommend a denial of variance. First of all, the first question is, what's the best use of the property in the neighborhood that's there? And secondly, what do the residents in that area who are impacted directly by what we do here, how are they handling it or what will be the impact upon that? Let's talk about the use of the area there. I walked the area the other day. I walked around the neighborhood there. And what you'll find is in that block from West Washington down to West Lincoln and past that area, West Lincoln down further, there are cars parked all over the street from West Lincoln down further. And there are a lot of existing multifamily dwellings in that area. And a lot of those residents, visitors, et cetera, are parking on the street as it is. So the street is congested in that area. Secondly, there's insufficient parking to handle this. One of the residents here mentioned the alley in the back, which is difficult with all the traffic going back through each way, et cetera. So I don't think that adding more multifamily dwellings in that area that are not there now is going to help that in any way. So that's one of the reasons I'm opposed to it. Secondly, the residents in the neighborhood, the question is, will this enhance that neighborhood by adding a multifamily dwelling there? The answer is no. It will impact the other residents for the traffic that's there, et cetera. And it will be yet another multifamily dwelling in that block which is highly congested as it is. So for those reasons, I recommend voting in favor of denying the request.
Alderperson Steele?
Yes, I'd like to also add that Alderman Rothweiler and I went down that alley. We worked tirelessly to get one way on Ammon Street so people take that alley to go that way, the opposite way. So they use that alley to get around the whole one way of Ammon Street. So that alley is like General Enyard had explained earlier, there's just enough room for one car. So when another car's coming, you have to move over. I just don't think, that's what South Charles uses and what Ammon uses, is that one alley.
Any other discussion? Alderperson Schneider?
I was at the meeting that night and I didn't think of it at the time. They said there will be separate units for each door, each rental place, a rental unit. How can they get that many heating and cooling units down in this basement if they're going to put washers and dryers down there and storage unit lockers for each, is my concern. I mean, to me, that's like an apartment building, not. So I'm just, it's not clarified to me why or how you could make that one, that many units and get everything done. And I'd asked about getting into the cellar because it has the old time cellar doors. You have to go on the outside is the way I understood. I mean, I don't understand. To me, it sounds like it's an apartment building, not a home turned into rental units.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
All right, Anthony? This is for?
Oh, so this is if you vote aye, it is a vote for deny. Sorry.
Aye.
Ovian?
Hi.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Interesting.
Okay. Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dally Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries for denial.
And then the last one is eleven E nine.
Okay. Eleven E nine, thirty-eight, October twenty-fifth, Victoria Martin requests for special use permit to operate a short-term rental Airbnb at sixteen thirty-nine North Charles Street, parcel number zero eight, one five point zero four one nine zero two eight, located in A one single family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code thirty-four point zero four three, one five four point one five, one five four point four six, one five four point four nine, one six two point zero nine four, one six two point five one five. Ward one zoning board of appeals recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
I make the motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to deny. Discussion?
Mayor, several of the neighbors have brought concerns regarding this property. This is an adjoining duplex, sixteen thirty-nine and sixteen forty-one with Charles Street. Sixteen forty-one was previously approved as a Airbnb. And during that review, it was stated that the owner would reside in the sixteen thirty-nine and thus be supervising the Airbnb. The neighbors agreed with it at that point, confident that someone will be there close by to take care of this property, et cetera. Now the severe concern has come up that now that both sides will be authorized for the Airbnb, it will move the owner out of that, out of that location and thus bring additional problems to the area immediately surrounding one of our elementary spaces. Set concerns for, for how this was planned out and moving forward.
Okay. Any other discussion from?
And I was at the meeting that night and she was saying how she's got to do some change and do some things and all that, like she didn't even have a dishwasher in the lawn. I mean, I didn't think she was all organized the way I interpreted her, the way she was reading or speaking.
Okay.
Am I able to speak with my motion?
No, ma'am, sorry.
That's interesting. Thank you. I was just curious because none of that was brought up in the zoning commission like two weeks ago. So I'm curious how that is possible to, my neighbors now have complaints that they didn't bring such like furniture in front, they put their time to, maybe because they don't have stuff in his house? I don't, but I'm curious. Am I able to speak?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll take a roll call.
This, an aye is for denial.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Ovian?
Oh, he stepped out.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious. No neighbors have said anything, nothing has cried in front, visited my address. So all we, I, separately, and I think I have no idea of which particular neighbor who sold the building next to me to Bronco Storage and then?
Can I talk about the retaining wall?
Put a plywood in front of it. So, and that's been a, a.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just, my question is?
The other persons of the ward, they were the ones that were contacted by?
And what were those complaints? Because they haven't been voiced. What were they specifically?
You'll have to talk to them after the. Okay. So an aye vote is to deny. A no vote is to approve. Okay?
Okay.
Got it?
Here we go. Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dally Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Yep. She's motion for deny, I'm just curious.
Okay. Alderperson Whitaker, motion from planning commission?
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the planning commission, eleven F one, I would like to make a motion to approve subdivision flat for twenty thirty-nine Park Road, parcel zero eight dash three three point zero dash four zero two dash zero two nine in unincorporated St. Clair County within one point five miles of the Bello corporate limits. Sullivan.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Shelley, communications?
Okay, here we go. Twelve A, Freedom Fest, twenty twenty-six, zero, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, and June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. Request from Freedom Fest to host Freedom Fest twenty twenty-six concerts at the campus football stadium Friday, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, five p.m. to ten thirty p.m. and Saturday, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, three p.m. to ten thirty p.m. Alcohol will be served. Request to reserve surrounding parking lots, additional city services, barricades, cones, no parking signage, picnic tables, trash coders, and police assistance.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have some kind of, in the assurance, and I love this project, do we have some kind of assurance on potential damage to the truck? Is it spelled out clearly that way or is it just understood that you damaged part of the property? How's that work?
Well, I mean, they'll have to have insurance on their own, anyway, to even have the event. So afterwards, it'll be something that we'll have to inspect and verify that there's.
Insurance is very fragile.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. How will they handle the license to serve liquor?
So they're starting their own not-for-profit so they can get a special event liquor license? Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a great idea. We need to bring back stuff like that to the city of Bello. And I've read that in Columbia all the time, how they have this, and it's, it's been for a long time. So I say thank you for all the effort which is put in and the time that it took for you to come up with this.
Any other discussion? You're not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have no petitions tonight. I need a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-five fifty-six.
Schneider, Sullivan.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Shelley?
Okay. Fourteen A, resolution thirty-five fifty-six, a resolution approving subdivision flat, St. Clair County permanent, parcel number zero eight, three three point zero four zero two zero two nine.
Rothweiler, so moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Is that a roll call? Oh, it's a doc.
Okay. Excellent. I'm sorry. Okay. Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dally Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. I need a motion to read by title only, ninety-four thirty-two, ninety-four thirty-three, ninety-four thirty-four, ninety-four thirty-five, ninety-four thirty-six, ninety-four thirty-seven, ninety-four thirty-eight, ninety-four forty, ninety-four forty-one, and ninety-four forty-two, and as a group.
Steele?
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Shelley?
Okay. So.
Ninety-four thirty-nine, let's not get ready.
Okay.
Once again.
Okay, here we go. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-four thirty-two, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-nine, October twenty-fifth, Zayed Mohammed Ali. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-four thirty-three, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-two, October twenty-fifth, twenty-five, Renadette Green. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-four thirty-four, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-three, October twenty-five, Jamie, James and Julie Canning. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-four thirty-five, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-four, October twenty-five, Gateway Storage. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-four thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-five, October twenty-five, United Inc. Fifteen F, a zoning ordinance regards to case thirty-six, October twenty-fifth, twenty-five, Beehive Market. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety-four thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-seven, October twenty-five, Tanya Clark. Fifteen I, ordinance ninety-four forty, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending Article seven traffic code, chapter seventy-three, general rules for driving, the revised ordinances of the city of Bello, Illinois as amended by the amending portions of section thereof. Fifteen J, ordinance ninety-four forty-one, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending Article seven traffic code, chapter seventy-three, general rules for driving of the revised ordinances of city of Bello, Illinois as amended by amending portions of section thereof. Fifteen K, ordinance ninety-four forty-two, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending Title seven traffic code, chapter seventy, general provisions, section seventy point zero seven five redemption of vehicles, and seventy point zero seven six Department of Administrative Tofu waiver of the revised code of ordinances of the city of Bello as amended.
Randall, so moved.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dally Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No unfinished business miscellaneous anew. I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Randall, so moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Yeah?
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dally Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees by ILCS one twenty dash two C one and our collective negotiation matter by ILCS one twenty dash two C two.
Randall.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I need fire.